City Secretary, would you please read the call? Commissioner Longoria.
Notice of Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a special meeting on Tuesday, May 24, 2011, at 6:00 PM, in the commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. The pious flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The pious flag, please.
The Texas flag, Judge Allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and individual.
The invocation will be...
Uh, Mayor, we have the National Anthem next.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and white stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? It proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the banner of the free and the home of the brave?
Reverend D.J. Martinez, the invocation, would you please stand.
Let us bow our heads and let us pray. Father of our faith, father of our families, father of our founders of this city, until we commit to something bigger, something bolder, something braver than ourselves, that is, until we commit to you, Heavenly Father, we will remain hesitant, we will draw back, and because of this, we will remain ineffective. Concerning all acts of love for and devotion to God, there is one elementary truth, the ignorance of which kills countless ideas and splendid plans, that the moment one definitely commits oneself to the Lord and the building of his kingdom, then an army of angels of providence rushes in to help them complete the work thus started. All sorts of things occur to help one that would never arise or have occurred, a stream of events and issues from our commitment, raising all manner of unforeseen incidents, unplanned meetings, and unpredictable material assistance, which no one could have dreamed of and which only God's providence can explain. And so this afternoon, Father, we commit to something bigger, bolder, and braver than ourselves, in serving Brownsville well and calling upon your name for the graces needed to do this. We pray for my dad, Tony Martinez, our new mayor, for the commissioners, Tetro, Longoria, recognizing that in believing in Brownsville, we ultimately and with deep commitment believe in you. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated and welcome to our chambers, people's house. Item number one, City Secretary, post-election business.
Item number one, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2011-038, canvassing and declaring the results of a general municipal and special election held on May 14, 2011, for the purpose of electing a mayor, at-large commissioner A, a district commissioner 1, district commissioner 2, and a district commissioner 4. If I may, Mayor, may I read the entire resolution into the record?
Please, and, uh, put the mic closer to you so it can be clearly heard.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, approving the returns canvassed and declaring the result of the general municipal and special municipal election held on the fourth day of May of 2011, for the purpose of electing a mayor, an at-large commissioner A, a district commissioner 1, a district commissioner 2, and a district commissioner 4. Whereas, on the 24th day of May, 2011, during a special meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, the City Commission canvassed the returns for a gen- for the general municipal and special election held in and throughout the City of Brownsville, Texas, on Saturday, May 14, 2011, and found the results to be as noted on attachment A of this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, that above, that the above election results serve as the final true and correct election results of the May 14, 2011, general municipal election and special municipal election, that the City Commission officially finds and determines that said election was duly ordered, proper notice of said election was duly given, proper election officers were duly appointed prior to said election, and said election was duly held. The city has complied with the Federal Voting Rights Act and the Texas Election Code, due returns of the result of said election have been made and delivered, and the City Commission has duly canvassed said returns, all in accordance with the law and the resolution calling the election. And that, the Commission officially finds, determines, and declares, the result of said election to be that Antonio Tony Martinez is hereby declared to be elected as mayor, Jessica Tetro Califa is hereby declared to be elected as commissioner 2, and Ricardo Longoria Jr. is declared to be re-elected as commissioner District 1. And none of the candidates for commissioner at-large A and for commissioner District 4 receive the majority vote, therefore requiring a runoff election between the following candidates who receive the highest and second num- and second highest number of votes. For commissioner at-large A, Estela Chavez-Vasquez and Robert Lopez. For commissioner District 4, Antonio Tony Savaleta and John Villarreal. That this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption issued this 24th day of May, 2011.
Mr. Mayor, I'll gladly make the motion approve.
Is that a motion? And we have a segment by Dr. Gowan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item two.
I did want to go ahead and just read the top vote-getters in the, in these positions. For mayor, Antonio Tony Martinez, 5,308 votes, or 57, 54% of the votes. Incumbent Commissioner Edward C. Camario, 2,388 votes for 24.34% of the votes. Commissioner District 1, Ricardo Longoria Jr., who is an incumbent, 799 votes for 55.10% of the votes. Roman Perez, 651 votes for 44.90% of the votes. Commissioner District 2, Jessica Tetro Califa, 897 votes at 57.68% of the votes, and she was a write-in candidate. And Charlie Atkinson, the incumbent, with 658 votes for 42.32% of the votes. The at-large and the District 4, which are going to be, uh, running during the runoff election, are Commissioner-at-Large A is Estela Chavez, who received 3,101 votes, 3,100 votes, excuse me, at 33.42% of the votes, and Robert Lopez at twen- at 2,398 votes with 25.85% of the vote. Commissioner District 4, Tony Savaleta, received 935 votes, or 30% point, 30.50% of the vote. John Villarreal received 917 votes, or 38.74%.
Okay, I think your motion is too mature. Commissioner, would you make it again?
Gladly, I make the motion to approve. Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item two, please.
Item two, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2011-039, ordering and calling a special municipal runoff election to be held on June 18, 2011, for the purpose of electing an at-large commissioner A and a commissioner District 4.
So moved. Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item three.
Item three will be the issuance of certificates of election and the administrations of oath of office for the office of mayor, Commissioner District 1 and Commissioner District 2. The certificate of election will be done first, if the candidates or the winners of the election would please come by. The successful candidates? Mayor?
Aye. Antonio Tony Martinez.
Antonio Tony Martinez.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly...
That I have not directly or indirectly.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay...
Paid, offer, or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute any money...
Contributed or promised to contribute any money.
Or thing of value...
Or thing of value.
Or promised any public office...
Or promised any public office.
Or employment...
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding of a vote...
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
At the election at which I was elected...
At the election for which I was elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Let me say a few words before I swear in, Tony. Just I'm excited as you are to be here this evening, sharing this moment with all these good folks. You know, it's honor and a privilege for me to be here tonight, because Tony and I go way back. We used to be partners, uh, in the profession of law, and I couldn't have asked for a better partner than the mayor-elect, Mr. Tony Martinez. During that time, I ran for, uh, and along with, excuse me, Orocha Barera, who's also here, I don't want to leave him out, as our other partner. During that time, I ran for, uh, district attorney and with Tony's support and Orocha's support, I was able to campaign and, uh, win that election. And, uh, I was ha- I was, uh, happy that I beat, or defeated, I should say, three other, uh, candidates to win without a runoff. Well, my senior partner here has to do one better than me, and he defeats four candidates without a runoff with 54% of the vote. So, without any further ado, let me go ahead and administer the oath. Could you raise your right hand, please? And repeat after me. Aye, Antonio Tony Martinez.
Aye, Antonio Tony Martinez.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the mayor of the City of Brownsville...
The duties of the mayor of the City of Brownsville.
Cameron County...
Cameron County.
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, Ricardo Longoria Jr.
Aye, Ricardo Longoria Jr.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid...
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered, promised to pay...
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute...
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value...
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office or employment...
Or public, or promised any public office or employment.
For the giving or withholding of a vote...
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
At the election at which I was elected...
At the election at which I was elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good evening, my name's David Sanchez, I'm judge of your 444th District Court, and I'd like to first say, uh, good evening and hello to all my friends out there, I see so many of you. It's an honor and a privilege for me to be here today, to swear in, uh, one of my primos. And this family is dedicated to service, just like so many of y'all out there are. We've, uh, my dad was a, uh, customs officer, back when it was US Customs, before he became CVP, and Rick's father was in the service industry, moving people around. We've got firefighters in the family, police officers in the family, county commissioners in the family, and thank goodness, once again, a city commissioner who will serve the citizens of the City of Brownsville. And it's my honor and privilege to be here today, um, to, uh, take part in this very important ceremony. So without further ado, let me get you to raise your right hand. Aye, Ricardo Longoria Jr.
Aye, Ricardo Longoria Jr.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties is ma- the duties as commissioner...
The duties as commissioner.
The City of Brownsville...
The City of Brownsville.
Cameron County...
Cameron County.
And the state of Texas...
And the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability...
And will do the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the way, it said mayor, so...
I don't want to take the mayorship from Tony, so...
We have one more, it seems wants... Jessica.
Yes, ma'am.
Aye, Jessica Tetro Califa.
Aye, Jessica Tetro Califa.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I have not directly...
That I have not directly...
Or indirectly paid...
Or indirectly paid.
Offered or promised to pay...
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute...
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value...
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office...
Or promised any public office.
Or employment...
Or employment.
For the giving...
For the giving.
Or withholding of a vote...
Or withholding of a vote.
At the election...
At the election...
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Jessica. Congratulations and congratulations.
Well, that's what it sounds like, a party. That's great. Ooh, I can do that all night long, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, good afternoon, everyone, my name is Elia Cornejo Lopez, and Jess- uh, Jessica, thank you so much for giving me the honor and the privilege to, uh, join you in this special moment. You know, when your brother-in-law, Trey Garza, called me on your behalf, I started thinking about the things that Jessica and I have in common, and I thought of Elia Cornejo Lopez, Jessica Tetro Califa. I said, "Man, those two names are a mouthful," you know? I said, "We really make our constituents work to call us," you know? And I started thinking about other firsts that we had, and of course, I thought of the fact that I served the City of Brownsville as a municipal court judge, but you have truly overshadowed any of my firsts, because you not only have won a position, but have been the first female and first person in the history of Brownsville to win as a writing candidate. And that's... So, you have truly overshadowed. And you know, I, I thought, I watched your election, and of course, what, the first time I read in the newspaper that you were running, uh, and then you were not qualified and disqualified and back and forth, and then I saw that you went to the Secretary of State, and I said, "Wow, that's a woman who doesn't take no for an answer." You know, I said, "And she's a woman who has a lot of gumption and a lot of guts." My daughter, on the way over here, my daughter says, "Mom, what are you gonna say?" And I said, "Gumption." She goes, "Mom, what does that mean?" And I said, "Well, guts." She goes, "Well, say that." So, Lucy was here, and my daughter, and, you know, um, on election day, uh, well, the last day of early voting, I received a phone call from one of my colleagues, and she says, "You know, Tony Martinez just called me, and he says that today's the last day of early voting, and you haven't voted." I said, "Well, how does Tony Martinez know what I've done or haven't done?" I said, "But, it's true, so thank you for the reminder call, and I will go vote right now." I said, "Tell Tony to relax, I'm going to go vote." So I went to go vote, and I went to the City of Brownsville Library, I took my daughter with me, and my kids always, I want to teach them to vote all the time. And then I took my mom to Cameron County later that evening, 'cause they didn't close till eight, and when I got there, I met two of your supporters that were there, Laura Arroyo, and I think she was with Ms. Pudner or Ms. Hackett, and they approached us with flowers. I said, "Oh, how nice, I've never been voting and received a flower." "This on behalf of Jessica Tetro, and we'd appreciate your vote." And I said, "Well, thank you for the flower, but I don't live in District 2." I said, "Uh, but they let us keep the flower anyway." And I thought... And I thought, "Well, what a wonderful touch, and what a feminine touch, and how unique and different your camping was." And of course, when I saw who some of your supporters were, I started to believe that your surmountable mountain could be climbed, and you did it, and congratulations, and thank you for letting me be, share this moment with you. Uh, this is the second time that I've had the honor of presiding over one of Jessica's monumental events in her life. I happened to perform her wedding a few months ago, and so I didn't put you under oath on the day of your wedding, but I will today, so if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jessica Tetro Califa...
I, Jessica Tetro Califa...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties...
The duties.
As Commissioner District 2...
As Commissioner District 2.
Of the City of Brownsville...
Of the City of Brownsville.
Cameron County...
Cameron County.
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve...
Preserve.
Protect and defend...
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and law of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Tetro Califa!
Let me just sign some last-minute things here. Okay, uh, if the new elected officials, please come and take your seats, and... For the sake of, um... For the sake of trying to expedite this just a little bit, there is a public forum which a couple people have signed up for. But we'll take that up at the end for right now, since it is the beginning of something that I hope will continue with a lot of momentum, a lot of belief, and a lot of excitement. That we can't thank you enough. I think everyone here that got sworn in can't thank you enough for your presence here. It means a lot to all of us. And I'm gonna allow each one of them to say a few words. But I just wanted to make that comment in the sense of telling you guys that what we've began cannot stop today. We have to continue the momentum. We have a lot of great things to do. We have a lot of energy. And so, without further ado, Rick, I'm gonna let you speak first, and then Jessica, Commissioner. And then I will say a few parting words, and then we'll go ahead and hear the public forum, if you would.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so very much to the residents of District One. Thank you for allowing me another opportunity to continue to serve another four years. Esto fue algo muy importante en mi vida. Quiero agradecerle a mis padres, a mis hermanos, a mi familia, a mis amigos, to my elementary, middle school, high school, and college friends, and everybody that came out to help me with the campaign. It was a very difficult time that I went through personally. And I wanna take this opportunity to thank my ex-wife for all of her patience and everything that we had to endure. We had to endure a lot of public ridicule, people that didn't know anything about our lives, that brought them into this campaign. And she had to endure all of that. Y por eso quiero agradecerle a mi esposa Alma. Agradecerle toda la paciencia que tu conmigo y con esta campaña. And of course, my children that are here present. This is the first time that I have both my children present at a soaring end. So it's good to have my son Ruben and my daughter Franca here present. And my priest, Father Mario, who was also here with us. Of course, you know that in any, in any person's life, our spiritual, such as you see, Mayor, with your son, you're blessed to have a son in the service of the Lord. We're a family that's based in faith, and you see that in our community. I had a forty-five percent amount of my community probably want some change. I'm gonna dedicate my next four years to getting that confidence back from that forty-four point nine or forty-five percent of them that thought otherwise. I'm gonna work my hardest. Just in essence, thank you. Gracias una vez más a todos, a mi familia. I mean, there's countless, countless people that I forgot to mention, but thank you. From the bottom of my heart, thank you so very much. Gracias, que Dios los bendiga. And I'm here to continue to serve, like everybody in this commission. I look forward to a very welcome change. I look forward to working with you, Mayor, and Jessica, and the commission, and the new commission. Tony, thank you, my friend. Thank you for everything. This is gonna be, this is my fourth mayor. This is the fourth mayor that I've had the honor of working with. And I, believe it or not, there's, you take the good, the bad, and everything else that comes with it. And I'm a learned person, and I'm here to learn from every single one of these people. I'm honored to have served with Edward. I'm honored to have served with Charlie, with everybody that's gone through. Mayor Trevino, Mayor Omada, Mayor Vela, and all the other members of this commission. We've done a lot of very, very good things for Brownsville. Sometimes it's a shame that over one issue, people will forget the work that an elected official has put into his or her service. So what I would ask, especially Jessica, and I know, Tony, you're pretty much used to it, but something that did affect my last eight years of service was the fact that you give yourself. You give yourself to service when you truly mean what you do. You give of yourself, and at times, you neglect your family. You neglect those that you love because of the sacrifice that you make for the city. I can recall that as soon as we get a storm, my wife and child, thank God, my parents live in front of our house, my wife and child were left alone because of the service that we provided this community and to the people. We're there for the people. And I just, I would ask, you know, that always, always remember your families and continue to serve. But also, at the same time, you know, to be careful with a lot of the sacrifices that you make. And with this, God bless everybody. Thank you for being here. I know that everybody's here for Jessica, for Tony, and so for me and everybody, you know? But thank you. Thank you for your presence here today. And I look, once again, like I said, I look forward to a very positive change in this city. Ladies and gentlemen, trust us. Continue to trust us that we are doing the best job for you that are present here and for everybody that's watching at home. God bless you, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. As far as my spiritual, I like to go in-house. I'm not much for outsourcing, okay? Jessica.
Wow, well, so many of you here are my inspiration. Along this very, very bumpy road, I have run into so many new friends. I could sit here for about thirty minutes in this, every single person that's helped me protect District Two. It was nothing personal. I just, I really wanna say that it was nothing personal. I have so many people in this room that I wanna thank. First of all, my parents, who are amazing people, who taught me these skills that I have used throughout this campaign and just made myself such a strong person, able to protect my district. I hope I can do a good job for them, my parents. My grandparents, Amador and Elvira Vela, who have instilled just incredible skills in me that, well, I can't even talk about, cutthroat skills. My husband Art and my children, my sister, my brother-in-law Trey. I love all of you guys, and I would not be here today if it were not for you guys sitting there, coaching me, helping me, guiding me, screaming at me throughout all of this. But along with that, Craig Grove, Chris Davis, the list goes on and on. Erasmo Castro, Linda Castro, Lauren Minnell. All of you have gotten phone calls from me at three in the morning, oh my God! And I'm sorry, but look, we're here. So I just wanna thank every single one of you. I know there's tons of people that I forgot, but Mimi, everybody, Steve Quick, Kimberly, Naomi, Dino, Robert, Alex, man, I could just list all of you all day. But anyways, I am here because I love District Two. It is where I was raised, and my heart and my love will never, ever, ever leave that area. I hope that I can be a good commissioner for you. I hope the tools that I have picked up along the way will help me, guide me. And I look for each and every one of you to guide me through my four years here as Commissioner. And on behalf of that, I would like to tell District Two personally, I love you. You have given me this title that put me in history. You've given me something that no other Texan has accomplished, and I am very, very thankful for that. And every single one of you that helped me, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me just tell you, I guess it's a story. But this courtroom, for some of you, means many different things. But for me, a few decades ago, when Judge Garza was sitting up here, this is where I first started practicing law. And it was a pretty awesome courtroom then, and it's a pretty awesome courtroom now. Had the pleasure of watching my son Trey be a law clerk over here with the judge. And we had many memories of all the little gatherings that they would, the entourages, I would call them. And they would bet and do all sorts of crazy things. And then Judge Philamon Vela came along, and some of the fellows that were here clerked. And then my wife Carla was here as clerking for the judge, the late Judge Venceo Garza. So it brings a flush, you know, just a rush of memories. And then, when I watched TJ give the invocation, Father TJ, forgive me. It, you know, I remember at that point, it was sort of the culmination of both Judge Vela and Judge Garza administering the oath for his law license when he became licensed in the state of Texas as a lawyer. So it, and now to come and culminate it with this, besides giving just an immense measure of gratitude to all of you, because whether, you know, you're out at the polls or whatever, and Ed, and some of your supporters, and everybody else, what happens is we were able to get not only a historical, you know, historic write-in, we were able to exceed the vote, which means to me that, you know, you all really care. And if I mentioned folks out there, I would be derelict, because there are so many that were so instrumental. Israel and others. But I do want, I think I've, on the various different times, I've had the pleasure of thanking my whole family, and Jason, and Alisa, and Marcia, and that whole bit. But where I think I've been a little bit remiss, there's a fellow back there named James Aldrete, who, along with Erica and Priest and a couple other folks, were really the rudder to my ship, because they gave you the sense of direction that you needed when you were sitting there going like, no mas, you know, no mas. I am not a movie star, I am not a TV star. And after about the thirty-eighth take, you know, you sort of felt like, you know, I'm gonna hit this guy over the head. But James, thank you, you and your group, you were marvelous. So it, but it shows, I hope, this community that, you know, when you get people of that kind of caliber, you're able to achieve great things because of their discipline and the drive that they bring to a campaign. I'll cut it short. I do wanna invite everybody here, including all of the people from the city, the employees. I had talked to Jessica, and I had talked to Commissioner Longoria, that I welcome everybody over to Lola's. If we mention to Sandra one more time, free chicken, she's gonna kill us, but... But I don't even know what they're cooking, but they asked me, they said, what are you doing? And I said, well, I'm doing what I do, but I like to do the best. And that is cook out in the back of my yard. So we're cooking out in the back of Lola's. And first come, first served. Hopefully, you have enough, Sandra. But I do wish that everybody would come by, even if it's for only a minute. I wanted to thank especially the bishop for being here. We had visited over the last week, and he says, I have confirmation in Olmito at seven. And I said, Bishop, it would mean so much to me. And I thank so much to the people in this room that you made a little bit of time, 'cause this city needs you, and this city needs all of our spiritual leaders. And Pastor, I think, Juan, if you had something for me, and I don't want to go today without receiving that, if I could.
Mayor, the city of Brownsville is celebrating with you and your company. I'm giving you this Bible, the word of God, the word of wisdom, the word of wisdom. And here you find all the answers, spiritual answers. May God richly bless you.
Thank you so much, Juan. Obviously, we, I think all of you know this, you can't thank God enough. So for all of you who are wondering, I'm having the time of my life, okay? This is great, and I thank God for every minute. Public forum. Estela? I think we have two people that have signed up. And I can't, can't...
Mr. Robert Udesti.
Robert Udesti. Is a three-minute limit, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Baptist Church, they were a tremendous group. And I thank you for all the things that you did in running your campaign. So best of wishes, okay? Madam Secretary, I think that concludes our business. And without further ado, can I hear a motion?
Mutiger.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn to Lola's, okay?